That if you put it like in your pocket, they told us to put those in our pocket.
Because when they're close together, they interfere with each other.
Or just somewhere that's not right in front of you.
I think you could put it like in the back or something, you know, if you don't want to. Yeah.
I have it in my bag, so I'm sure I'm gonna.
Downtown at the park. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mm hmm. Yeah.
You should switch with Honest Chair. I wonder if this one's better.
Well, now that we're all dialed in.
She has a good time. That's oh, yeah.
Sarah, are you ready?
Yes.
Our page. You're ready, Nicole? Okay. So let's go ahead and call the Talent City Council regular meeting of June 21st to order at 6:49. Roll call, please.
Council clerk is not present. Council number here. Council writer here. Council first season.
Here.
Council buyers is not present. Council paramiller here. Mayor A F Sler here. Mayor, you have a firm.
Thank you, Lucero. The first item on the agenda is additions and corrections, or rather, the second item on the agenda is additions and corrections to the agenda. And before I open that up, I just would ask that we move item 9.6 to 9.1. This is the request for the council discretionary funds. I think it'll be a short, fairly short item, and I hear that the presenter goes to bed early, so.
Mayor, if we also need to move 9.3 to 9.2. This is how it's set together so superintendent Barry can also head home and on earlier out.
So did I hear you say move 9.3 to 9.2?
The after the.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I gotcha. All right, are there any objections? Oh, let me open that up to the council. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda, council phenomena?
Yeah, I wanted to get the consent calendar, the some purple to do reference to the traffic safety, traffic safety commission. And I want to probably reactively print it out with a version for you all. Oh, so on the calendar should be 7.5 and 7.5, which is the appointment of traffic safety and certification commission members. Okay, great, thanks.
So we'll see that on the, on the agenda we have on our screen. Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Penamora?
Yeah, I've not seen it on the consent. Did you say you put it on the consent?
Let me pull it up.
At least at the packet that I have that was opened before.
Okay. Sorry, one second on technical difficulties.
I have nine, five, and nine six online.
So it would be in the consent calendar under.
Did you say 7.5? Is that where you were saying it should be somewhere in 7.6? It looks like we got our versions mixed up. Mostly being here. Just to get it done now, especially we skip the next. Great. Um, there maybe more. Should we just download maybe from the website, the latest packet? So. I really feel I'm scrolling through the website now to identify we got those applications. Pardon you all.
The applications?
Yes.
You mean if you got the recommendations in?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I thought they did not make it in the package recommendations. We're welcome to add them up verbally. Am I having information? If that's helpful, helpful. So I would suggest that we add that item 7.5, the appointment of Lee Lo. And as item 7.6, the appointment of Mary Share.
Are there any other corrections or additions? Seeing none, I would ask if the council has any objections to any other changes. Right, we have consent. Item number three is community announcement staff. Yes.
All right, I would love to share with you all on the screens in front of you or up on the screen that we have some fun events coming in the second half of June. Our town evening market downtown park is coming with their artists and vendors. June 24th, we'll have music on the comments. Actually, Quinn and the Liberators are a great band out of Portland, I believe. And then the Town Historical Society is doing a function stamp quilt. Community open house on the 27th. A quick reminder, harvest special is coming in the fall, and we strongly encourage all residents to sign up for systems alert so that you are prepared this coming fire season. And reminder that we debate, we ask that homes, their grass and weeds cut to about six inches height for fire safety. And then last but not least, and this is the message for Council of the Seeds of we are currently right now doing helmets for ice cream, where if any of our officers see anyone wearing a bike helmet as they go to or from anywhere in town, you could receive a free ice cream coupon.
I was afraid I'd have to turn in my helmet for ice.
So you keep the helmet, you keep the helmet. And those are stats announcements.
Thank you. I just want to, I just want to mention that for the first time, I think, and maybe since we started Zoom, there are zero attendees. And I'm wondering if perhaps somebody can test getting in just to make sure that we're not having any technical difficulties for people who want to zoom in.
Great. And I will share, we did not notice this at the Zoom meeting. You know, this is a town hall in person meeting because this is our first night testing Zoom. We do have staff, we await the analysts to test out what it's like.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, that makes sense. All right. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to speakers heard on non-agenda items. We have one speaker request form. Let's see. No, I think we have two speaker request forms on non-agenda items. So I'll go ahead and call Jolene Smith forward. Jolene, I just want to verify, is this a non-agenda item? In other words, do you want to speak on something that isn't already on the agenda? Okay, great. Come on forward and please state your name and your city for the record. And you, if you'll set the timer for three minutes.
Three.
Yeah, that's, we just have a long agenda tonight, so, yeah.
So my name is Jolene Smith. I'm out of the town here. And I'm talking today to talk about an issue I have regarding the boats and about ground goals. And my, I'm in charge of 2017, and my neighbor put in a pool in 2019. There's a bathroom, well, she added a bathroom. My backyard, the pools, I have a wooden house with a property line. And because talent, oh, and this is a couple of years old, the information.
Jolene, can I stop you just for a second? And we'll start your time over again. I just want to say for full disclosure and transparency that the person you're talking about is my cousin and a family member. So if it would make you more comfortable, I would step down while you talk about this. But I just want to let you know that, that she's a family member. And, and I just want to state that for the record. Yeah. No, I feel like I'm objective, but, but I just, I wouldn't feel fair to, it would feel bad if I didn't say anything about that. Yeah. Okay, Jolene, can we start her time over again?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And you can grab.
Go ahead and pick up for you.
Okay, so I've done before, then I've just been in the town, but would be set back by lines. You know, I talked to the whole office, sort of, the point of point, Jacksonville, Eagle Point, United Springs, and they all have a 45 foot and some days with 10 foot setback for pools. And what's occurring is the pool is name bringing on my property. And I've got some pictures, I don't know if I can pull them around, but just the pool that's bringing, you know, on my property. And it destroys my plants and it washes away all my mulch. And it's been in the past between the two outlets and then last summer, it started leaving the outdoor which then they're dropping vice oiling facility more plants and I'm sure you for whatever, which I think that are just destroying its tons of grass and destroying. And for this recurring reason, I was happy with the progress there. And because there was a structure, it's like a picture of the pool with the gap. And because it was full of story, which is most likely a hole to, but the gap she called without a permit, I complained, she got a permit. The gap is open. By the way, it's why I showed it to her, it keeps on actually being a permanent structure. And I talked with Zach and Lee about that because the pool is part of the gap, the gap has to be in our permanent structure. Then the gap could not be in existence without the pool, because it's just now real follow along. And also the gap is, I have two people in the fence and four officers said, it shouldn't be leaving, like, because it's a permanent, permanent home. So we think a lot of things that are probably about this situation that are constantly in my action, permanently in the lawsuit witness because I didn't get support in the city and, and lost the president of the trust board. And the very interesting person who's not being maintained is a bit older. I am concerned that there is about leaking, the pit body block, it's a large pool. You have to do damage. And we're not the city to consider when you allow a body, something like that, being a bad door that she had required three weeks. Like, because you could come in after the gutter and take it out in the sewer, you know, but how friendly for it now, just drag it into the ground, because it goes into my property because she puts it on the fence line. I've got multiple pictures that show the boat, the wall, the fence, this water level, the fence, so you're going to lose it when I look at it in my life, this place. And it's just that the hazard waiting to do more damage. And it really definitely did share that, but it certainly cost me, you know, a lot of money. And
Time is up. Minutes. That's how many minutes, Jolene?
Just, you know, you can kind of see it with some of the houses and they've got, that people on, you know, they're on. It, it leaks, it leaks, it leaks out water. And I wasn't maintaining it, and I know the houses leaked, and some of them did get replaced, but I think the pool is leaking. Like, I tried to catch anything I saw on the, the pool toward the waterfront wire. And they're being, well, not mostly, they obviously, but that's why they often have a pipe or ten foot setback too, with the lots scattered around. But in this case, it doesn't.
Jolene, I'm afraid that is time.
Yeah.
If you have some concerns that you want to submit in writing to the city, that's what I would recommend because I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to move on to the next speaker.
So what I submitted to, like, what, what department?
To Lucero, our city recorder was the best. Okay, great. Thank you, Jolene. Okay, the next speaker on, I'm sorry, I'll wait. Take your time, Jolene. The next speaker on non-agenda item is Bo DeBain. And speak your name and city to the record. State your name and city to the record.
Thank you.
The better.
Better for the zoom post. Yeah.
I just want to voice something that I've experienced a couple of times now from the city where the first time was maybe a year or so ago on the the backflow valves. I was issued a warning that I would have my water turned off before the regular scheduled yearly backflow check was done. And it wasn't like a warning or anything like that. It was just like, hey, we're gonna turn your water off. So I felt like that was a little harsh, but I'm like, well, I don't know. And then I got another one today. Granted, I actually forgot to pay my bill last month, slipped. I don't know what happened. But then I got one and, and then, you know, like, two weeks later, when I realized, you know, I got one like on the third or whatever it is. And I noticed then that I hadn't gotten one from before. And then I get another letter. It's like, you're gonna get your water turned off. And it just felt really harsh. And I think for someone who can't just go write the check really easily, it would be really scary. And I think maybe a warning would be a little kinder. But that's really all I have to say. And I checked with like my roommate and they felt the same way. Maybe look at that policy and I don't know. Maybe you can afford it, maybe you can't, but a little leeway would be nice. Thanks.
Thanks for those comments. But before you step down, I want to say thank you on behalf of a grateful city for the incredible film that you made on the night of the fire, that so much of what you filmed would have never been captured any other way. And I often tell a story that from the distance where I was staying in a hotel because we were evacuated. I had no idea what we were looking at until your fire went by the mom green garage. And it was just that moment that I felt reconnected to our community and it was heartbreaking, of course, but, but it was an incredible like, it's an incredible piece of history. Your film in particular is an incredible piece of history. And I just want to thank you.
And I would say I've never met you in person, but I live in the stage way apartments on the, you know, the, the newer building there where you stopped and I just, thank you very much. Yeah, my mom, I think, sent me a piece of that and really said, thank you for stopping there and putting out those little fires.
Our, our, our local fire department really liked the ones that, I don't know, they're just the, the local fire department was really amazing that night, even though they, they couldn't save as much as they wanted to, but they worked really hard to keep it off of that side of the road.
I always wanted to say thank you in person.
Yeah. You're welcome. It was, it was just being in that spot and feeling called to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think I'm, I think I'm thinking about the same note because I was evacuated as well. It was really helpful to see that, to understand what was going on.
Well, you know, I think we all look at Bart Mulch a little differently after that.
For sure. Yeah, and I appreciate your comments about the fire department as well. They, they're great. Okay. So there are no, that's it for non-agenda item. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. Item 5.1 is a resolution 2023 dash 065 dash R, authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2022 dash 2023 staff report.
Yeah, thank you. So supplemental budget is a chance for us to make a course correction for the end of the fiscal year. So this is a budget amendment for our current year budget to account for some expenditures and revenues that we did not anticipate at the time of the budget was adopted. So I will go ahead and just walk you through what those changes are, specifically focusing on our expenditures, because that is per budget law. What we want to say within bounds of every fiscal year. And so this fiscal year, we had some increases, particularly in personnel costs that we did not anticipate. One of our contract negotiations with the union ended up being slightly higher than we had budgeted for. And we had a snippet increase to cover insurance. That ended up being a 7,000 addition to what we thought we were going to spend for this fiscal year. Luckily, we were able to absorb most of those, you just vacancy savings. But I'll walk you through on the screen in front what all those different appropriations are in the supplemental budget. Park fund, we're just adding some past, some padding to the personnel budget in parts just to make sure we don't go over budget. Same with our streets fund, that 10,000 is for over budget. Water utility fund, this is in part for the personnel, make sure we don't go over budget and personnel spending. But also we had a we paused debt payment during COVID, which then caused an adjustment to our future debt payments. So we had a slight increase in how much we had owed on one of our loans that we have. SDC fund, this is an increase due to the approval of the truck like truck stop water line relocation that the city council approved to move forward with. And that transfer went into CIP fund, and what you see in that CIP fund is the spending then of that relocation money. So this supplemental budget officially adopts these changes. And then we'll go into effect for our audit following year to make sure we stay within our budget appropriations.
Are there any questions of staff? Council phenomena?
Yeah, I think I, I'm following the graphic. I got a little lost. I thought you said the general fund is showing an adjustment, but there's nothing in the amendment.
But I'm sure that, I'm sure there's no change towards that all, but we do not do a just, I mean, the appropriation.
So why does it, why does there five that?
Oh, million.
Oh, that's all. Oh, sorry. That's what it was before. Yeah.
Got it. So this is the change, and this is the impact.
Gotcha.
So what you all will be adopting a resolution is the total appropriation, which is a black hole.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to comment that I think, you know, we've been expecting this kind of on an annual basis after post-fire with a lot of the, the financial changes and just unusual circumstances that we've been facing. So if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion. As a public, that's right, it'd be great. So with that, I'll open up a public hearing. Are there any speaker request forms on item that?
I was just encouraging Councilor Greider to do the motion, so.
I can welcome. I'll just. Yeah, it'd be good to have you back on a supplemental budget item.
Yeah.
No speaker request forms on this one, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:09 or 7:10. So any, are there any other comments before I look for a motion? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Council writer.
I move to approve resolution 2023 dash 065 dash R, author supplemental budget adjustment, increasing resources and making appropriations for the city of talent for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022 and ending June 30th, 2023.
Second. We have a motion and a couple of seconds to approve 2020, a resolution 2023 dash 065 dash R, authorizing a supplemental budget amendment. Increasing resources and making appropriations for the city of talent for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30th, 2023. Is there any further discussion? Do you need a roll call for resolution please?
Yeah.
Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Penora?
Yes.
Councilor Greider?
Yeah.
Councilor Pestis?
Yes.
Council Paramiller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Lucero. Item 6.1 on the agenda is the city manager reports staff.
Yes, absolutely. I will say most of the agenda items that you guys see in the agenda tonight have been the focus of staff for the last few weeks. So my report is very short. I just won't let you guys know that labor negotiations have officially started. You have our first bargaining session next week for both our police unit as well as our general unit. And just so you guys know, ahead of time, some dates, I'll be out of office, the 3rd and 4th. I will be seeing if there's no pending agenda items for the 5th. I will be considering potentially canceling the July 5th meeting in consultation with the mayor and council president. I've been working from Portland till I 11 through 16th. I am actually accepting a grant award from the city up there. We received a portable generator as well. These are the funds for our hazard schools renewable. And then I will be out of office the 21st, 3rd, and 5th. What is the grant, Jordan? Yeah, so two different grants. One is Spire, which gives out emergency equipment every year to the offices of emergency management. And so we were given a portable generator for use in emergencies.
Fire.
Spire. And then the other one is from the Oregon Fire Marshal's Office. And that was for hazardous food removal along Bear Creek.
Jordan, can you tell me approximately when the labor negotiations come to council for for, for the, comes to the agenda for the first time?
Yes, so we'll be having an executive session at our next meeting, just for you guys to get an update directly from Emily, who is our first chair. Last year, negotiations took about a month, month to two months. So you guys will be getting regular updates during the process, but then we'll come to council for a vote once those negotiations have reached an agreement.
Like the beginning of August.
And what we estimate it'll be coming up for.
End of July, maybe?
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Yep, sorry. That generator is the one that we've heard of before, that's the 25,000 and something dollar. It's a, it's the big generator that is going to public works, is that?
We haven't, we've received word that we've received a generator, but no details. We haven't, uh, we've received word that we've received a generator, but no details on. Size of the generator yet, because we're waiting, uh, for those details to come through.
And it, it's supposed to go to public works, that's the plan for.
The idea of this dinner is it lives at public works, but it's portable.
Okay.
And so we aren't able to move it to any location that needs it.
Okay.
Um, so say it's, uh, we'd have an emergency operations center at the community center, we can pull it up there and we're getting generator hookings put in. Um, I know we talked to the school district about using schools and shelters. It could also be pulled to that location.
Cool.
Uh, they are working on the details, but they asked it to come in person and say, oh, you think about that a week, so. We will make it. Yeah, thanks for representing, of course. Um, okay. Any other questions? Next item is six point two, urban rental activities, staff. Yeah, just to give, uh, I go here to update on urban renewal. There are business grants available for businesses and commercial properties up to fifteen thousand dollars for any property improvement. Really encourage folks to tend, who are just able to give one to gather for their outdoor landscaping and some repainting of the building. Uh, just a tour board did approve their fiscal year twenty-three budget. And a quick update on the transitional housing at the access site. There are currently fifty trailers occupied and currently await with some thirty families for transitional housing. Um, the other big news there is that the state did approve the tourist plan for disposition of the trailers. What do we do with the trailers after the program ends? Um. And that disposition is really focused on donating the trailers for traditional housing, education and training purposes. And that's the tour updates. Any questions? Okay, I, I want to ask you a question. So, um, the, can we go back? Yeah, of course. When we get a Torah update and we're in, as the city, if we have any questions about, um, or kind of. Um, recommendations for, um, actions on the, for Torah, for Torah, um. We should do that at the Torah meeting, right? Typically, I would recommend doing it at the Torah meeting. If it's a city council oversight action, you are a little to get up at city council. Uh, this is also mostly to help share with the community what's going on with urban renewal. Um, since often more and more tend to be city council meetings than are urban renewal meetings. So I, I, um, I wonder if it, um. If I could ask for something to be put on the, the next Torah agenda based on, um, well, really it was based on the conversations that we had at a study session recently. And to talk about, um, contracting, um, landscaping. Okay, and, and property maintenance. Great, we can get that on the next agenda. All right, thank you, Jordan.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar and, um. I would, I'm going to ask that we, uh, pull out the appointments, um, just for further discussion, but otherwise I would ask. If there are any questions or comments, uh, about the consent calendars. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Councillor. Perry Miller.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Item seven one, seven point two, seven point three. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, so item number seven point four is the appointment of alternate member, uh, to talent publics committee. Uh, our committee, do we have?
Yes.
Her application on. On the, on the agenda. I don't have the agenda packet. And do you have the applications in, of the other ones in the agenda as well? Um, I do not have them, uh, physically on this version, so I'm not able to route into the desktop. Okay, that's okay, yeah. Um, all right, so, um, this would be, I'm, I'm, uh, seeking consent of the council to appoint Amanda Grove. Um, at the alternate matter, member for T-PAC. I had a really great, uh, conversation with her. Uh, we had a resounding. Um, recommendation from the talent publics art committee. Do you have any comments you'd like to make, liaison member?
Just that, um, she's been very patient with us and the committee is very excited to have her join. Um, she owns Golden Grove Collective in Ashland and is a very business savvy and artsy person. So we're really excited to have her on the team.
Great, and with the recommendation from talent parks, uh, talent public arts committee, uh, I would entertain a motion. To, um, approve the recommendation.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the recommendation of appointing Amanda Grove. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have, she's, she's delightful and I'm really glad to have her on board. And it's so great to see new applicants. I was so excited. Um, item seven point four, uh, seven, seven point five is the recommendation, uh, of appointing Lee Lowell to the traffic and safety commission. Um. I had a great conversation with Lee, uh, in the case where there's not a standing. Um. There's, in the case where there's not a standing committee or commission, um, I take the recommendations from. The liaison in accordance with our practice. It's in the policy now, isn't it? Didn't we put that in the policy or is it just? Yeah, it's okay in accordance with practice. Um, we've been doing it for a while. Maybe we should put it in the policy. Um, anyway, um, she had a, a great. Great, uh, interview with me and, um, also really good feedback from, uh, council. Um, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to. Appoint Lilo to the traffic safety commission. Councillor Penora.
I move to appoint Lilo to the traffic safety commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Lilo, um, to the traffic safety commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven point six is, um, the recommendation to appoint Mary Bouche. Um, to the traffic safety commission. Uh, again, I had a good interview with her, um, and she interviewed with the, uh. Liaison to this position and from council and I got really good recommendations. Um, in, uh, an email and. Um, I will enter, it, it's our, let's see, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mary Bouche to the traffic safety commission. Councillor Penora. Second, there's a motion and a second to, uh, appoint Mary Bouche to the traffic and safety commission. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, here I want to say that there were four applicants and they were all new applicants, if I remember correctly. And so it was really exciting to see, um, emerging, um, interest in our positions. And, um, I'll be sending an email out in the morning, just, uh, asking. Um, asking the other applicants to please stay interested, that there's, there's, uh, always openings emerging. And I really appreciate their participation in the process. Um. Next item on the agenda is. Really quickly, um. I just want to say that one of the things I want to try to do moving forward is, is to pull these appointments out of the consent calendar. Um, I don't mind leaving them there because I think that's in our order of business, I think, but, um, just, just as a practice, just because I think it's, uh. Um, it's good to, um, make comments about their, you know. Um, state their name to the record and that sort of thing. Um, and thank everybody for participating and applying. Unfinished business is at number eight, resolution, uh, eight point one is resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero six six dash R. To make budget appropriations and to adopt the city of talent fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four annual budget. Staff? Yeah. Thank you, ma'am. So switching from the fiscal year twenty-three supplemental budget to now planning for next year's budget. Um, this budget for me. And let me go quick request, councillor Greider, I need your hair is hitting the mic.
That one, I, I heard that too, but I was like.
Your, your beautiful hair. Whatever works for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, so this budget was originally proposed by staff and it was reviewed by the budget committee. Um, but we did review, make some minor amendments and approved the budget. City council has reviewed this approved budget at our last city council meeting. And city council did make three changes to the budget that have been reflected, uh, in this resolution. And those three changes was that we added an additional three hundred and three thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. In grant revenue and grant ventures to the general fund. And that was reflective of grants that we learned we had received, the ones that were going out to Salem Ford. Um, that we didn't know about when we had drafted the budget. We have reallocated seventy-one hundred dollars to the committees and commissions for specific projects that they need for the coming year, as well as some additional funds to just get them some flexibility. And we have allocated twenty-five thousand from our street funds into our capital project for helping establish irrigation along Highway nine to support the camping. Um, the budget for you all tonight reflects those three changes. Um, and council has the option of making additional changes, adopting it as is, or asking to refer us to a future meeting. The one requirement that we have is that we do need to adopt the budget by June thirtieth. Any questions or comments of staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Councillor Perry Miller.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero six six dash R. To make budget appropriations and adopt the city of talent fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget.
Second, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution. Number twenty twenty-three dash zero six six dash R to make budget appropriations and adopt. Um, so. My screen is over almost all of the language here. Let's see if I can change it. You can just drag it. There we go. And adopt the city of talent fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four annual budget. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Um, councillor Penora.
Yes.
Councillor Greider.
Yes.
Councillor Pissis.
Yes.
Councillor Per Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Lucero. Item eight point two is consideration of temporary herbicide waiver for select ongoing maintenance locations. Staff report?
Yes. Thank you. Um, so this is a conversation that city council started several months ago. Um, just about, uh, the city's IPM policy and some challenges the city is facing. One of those challenges was our restoration projects that we have going on, where we're trying to replace very invasive plantable species. Um, with non-native plants and how herbicide is a tool that helps us control things like blackberries to be able to establish those native systems. Um, city council did approve that amendment to our IPM policy. Um, and went ahead and adopted some herbicide standards so that when we do use them, we're making sure we're using them with the lowest impact to people, pollinators and places. The topics tonight discussed are just some ongoing maintenance struggles that city staff have had in trying to upkeep and keep. All of the city responsible grounds up to standard. So on the screen in front of you all, um, is the professional ground maintenance standard level that describes the different levels of ground maintenance. And the recommendation with the minimum maintenance requirements to keep them at a level. Um, that different organization wants to. So as you can see, sorry, I think my hair is getting annoying too, on that level one, that's like the prestige. Disneyland grounds, uh, level of ground maintenance. Down to level five, which is really, who won the bare minimum, um, for these property. In that third column, the dark blue, if you see kind of where we are currently at with our grounds. You know, we prioritize our city parks and our, um, city facilities, so the planter beds and the grasses around our public buildings. Um, but things like the public works yard, rights of way, plan beds, bio swales, where it's more properties, we are just, we're losing the battle against the weeds and those things. You know, talking with staff where we'd like to have our level of care is in that last column with the bright blue. Um, where we really want to help just clean up and straighten up and, and look sharper, both for fire safety as well as just for the local. Um. You know, one of the main issues for us to be able to achieve that is either we need more staffing. To help maintain our grounds so that we'd like to maintain them, or you change up the tools we have. Now, we recognize that the city is not at a point right now where we can necessarily afford more staffing. So we're really looking at asking for a temporary waiver for herbicide use in very specific applications. To help us address these ground maintenance issues while we work towards understanding what staffing we need. And what the revenue requirements are in maintaining the staffing office. And to help pay what level of staffing capacity, you know, towns were facing. We did do some metrics just to understand how much it costs to maintain certain things for every year. Um, so maintaining our city bioswales, you know, RVSS was the best place for a modern master plan and. And did a staffing estimate for how much time it would take to maintain all of our bioswale. Um, and that's about a hundred and twenty-eight hours a year, for seventy-six hundred dollars per year. Um, our downtown planter beds, I'm sure everyone folks would see, but we've are fascinated and love our downtown planter beds. We end up hiring a local contractor, a local landscaper to clean up those beds. Um, it took them a hundred and twenty hours to clean up. These are the beds along Main Street, Talon Avenue and Seber Street. Uh, and unfortunately, the rain right after they cleaned it up, and you're back to the pretty similar level of weeds that we have at the moment we hired them. So expecting that we'd have to do a major cleanup probably six times a year, three times in the spring and three times in the fall, doing manual, uh, maintenance would be about forty-three thousand a year. And then recently, we had some urban forestry volunteers go out and do some weeding for us in Cameron Springs Park with the new trees. They were able to weed, uh, collectively two hundred square feet in a collective two hours. Um, so I think four people were out there for thirty minutes. And so if we take that rate of hand weeding and we say, hey, we want to weed ten percent of all of our developed parks every year. That would require eight hundred hours per cleanup of that ten percent. Um, estimating that we probably want to do four times per year of weeding and, and at least ten percent of our park space. And that's equivalent of about two hundred thousand a year. And, you know, where it's difficult, um, is that herbicide is a tool that really helps reduce the. Time needed to take care of these brown spaces. Um. So for that, we'll be showing the downtown planter beds. If we were to beach herbicides, it would be, uh, application twice a year. The, it would take one day to apply the herbicide. We let it dry and we go ahead and put bark and milk over it the next day. And so that's where the excellent point for hours, you know, assuming that one happens, we need to work on that. The cost of doing that is that twenty-eight hundred per year, three thousand per year compared to the forty-three thousand. Uh, I'm not showing examples of the bioswales of the parks, because, you know, we're strongly aligned with those, those spaces should not have herbicide applied. Because those are spaces where we have most children and most of our pollinators in those areas. You know, another way to look at using those same levels or same professional ground maintenance standards. We have thirty-seven acres of developed parks. And their recommended ratio is that for those thirty-seven acres, we have two and a half to five fully dedicated staff just making parks. Right now, the city has one staff member for dedicated to the parks. So we're really struggling to keep up, um, with the needs and maintenance of our ground facilities. What we're doing is we're prioritizing those spaces that are most fire hazards. And we're prioritizing the spaces that may limit access to focus of places. For example, when things are over growing sidewalks, some people who's in, um, a wheelchair or another non-able device, have better access like a cow. We're falling short in visual places in the highway, nine mediums and our fancy beds, et cetera. The places that really beautify in our aesthetic for our community. Um, are tough for us to see of staff as well. So really with this request for temporary waiver, our goal is to improve our overall ground state and start reducing the stack time required to maintain certain heights of spaces. So that we can reallocate that staff time to those spaces that we know we want to for sure use all of our manual maintenance staff. The long-term goal is to really affect what our staffing number needed to maintain the town to level we want. Um, and then developing a level that will sustain those minimums. I believe that in two years, we can figure out what that is. Um, so the request is really for a two-year herbicide waiver for the following locations. Let me switch it so you guys can actually see. Um, and we've gone through, this is the best way we can most closely align with the goal of our IPM policy, which is reducing exposure. To our people, especially our children, our pets, pollinators, um, and more important environmental places. So this waiver would apply only to non-pollinator planters. Um, so places where, you know, they're not intentional for pollinators, we have incredible polliner club that. Um, so places where, you know, they're not intentional for pollinators, who have incredible pollinator club that does maintain those spaces. Highway ninety-nine, where you guys see a lot of weeds coming up through the cracks on the sidewalk and the medians. Our large swamp right away along Rock Road, and there's one section out um on the south end of town. Our reservoir sites, we have over twelve acres that are our reservoir sites, um, that we do nothing right now. They're too steep to mow currently. Um, and so the only way to be able to really help control some of the more family weed could be through application. Of herbicides, they all will plant stand and there's actually no public access there. And then public works there as well.
So you talked about just spraying all the acreage then?
Not spraying the acreage, we're talking about spot treatment of the really um aggressive weeds. Um, so for example, in our planky beds, it would be someone who's a licensed backer theater going out with a backpack. That would go on and do the paint.
I'm thinking in particular for reservoir sites.
Rather than what we would do is we would do uh. Bulk mowing, we're trying to invest in a piece of equipment where you could mow the slopes. But then the things like the blackberries and the goat heads and the things that are super tough for us to control, doing the spot treatment on those specific locations.
Yeah, it does seem important to get the tall grasses knocked there.
Yeah. Um, which we could do a spray method, that'd be very certain conditions for our herbicide policy. Where we'd be able to do that, the wind has to be a certain low level, the temperature has to be a certain temperature and the viewpoint.
What's the likelihood of actually getting one of these?
Um. I'd have to talk to Mike Oxendine, who's been our kind of consultant since he has been uh in charge of IPM policies historically. He says they happen a lot, but they happen typically at like five AM to eight AM. Uh. It's the kind of when the weather sweet slot hit.
Oh, no, no, I'm wondering about actually getting a mower that could.
Oh, um, hopeful with these grant monies that we're getting for hazardous school removal. Then it could have uh the ability to mow steep banks as well. So I'm going to give it an eighty percent chance right now that we'll be able to get it. Okay, I'm going to adjust to seventy percent just to hit my bets.
But is it in the budget for next year?
It is in the one of the grant monies for that type of power.
Great.
Yeah. Um, but I wonder, my guys, this is a very important, intensive topic for the community and that city council in particular worked a lot, very strong with the community about it. Um, so we're making this request for you tonight, but of course, city council's decision, we will continue to just apply and divert resources as needed. If city council decides not to move forward with the waiver.
Councilor Penomar?
Thanks. Um, I noticed the last time uh. That the city did a really great job um with outreach um to some of the folks who have been doing this work. I'm, I only saw this, right? You know, you got the packet yesterday. I'm wondering if if folks are, if those folks are aware that this is before us tonight. So Beyond Toxic is aware, they did have direct communication with them. We did set up the noticing list of this agenda, of the agenda item to our noticing list. I did not do great follow-up with other individuals, largely to my own capacity issues this past week.
Councilor Penomar?
Um, so as far as the timeline for some of these. Um, is this something that we could uh postpone a decision until we get. Um, a little bit more public feedback, or is it um? What's what you're feeling about the timeline?
Yeah, I think, you know, so the way the application works. You know, is that uh we have right now the only license applicator we have on staff, Mike Oxendine. Where he would go out on a spot treat locations. Wait for it to dry and we done with weed rack and remove all of the. Things that are showing. And then we could like bark and milk on top for those areas that are publicly acceptable areas. And so we're currently trying to focus on weed racking it now, so it would be really nice to do it now while we're cleaning up all these beds. Um, if it doesn't happen, we would have our first application in the fall. Uh. Which, you know, is is. Those, the three in the fall are a big vacancy, so it'll have a good impact in the fall and then help us in a better position to start up next summer. For the next round of weeds.
Okay, so I'm I'm thinking about fire hazard and everything as far as right now, so it sounds like. And correct me, uh, it sounds like that that we could get by with not doing it now, or do you really want to get it done now?
It really depends on the rain forecast for the road valley for the next month. Um, if rain season is over, then yeah, I don't think it makes a big difference if we wait now versus if we wait the fall. If we are going to have another week of rain, we will have another bloom of weeds and tall grasses. So it's uh, I never am willing to bet on our value.
And the, and the application would be after the rain or before the rain?
Um. As long as it doesn't rain within a twenty-four period of the application. It, or it works either way. I would prefer to get it before the rain because then we're preventing increased growth.
I guess, I guess what I'm, sorry to keep following up. Good, I was checking, um, yeah, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, could we make this decision like, could, could we do some sort of contingency?
So can you define what you mean by continuing?
Well, like if it rains, if it doesn't rain, wait till the fall, if it does rain, or even postpone till we get more public, you know, input or. Authorize one application if it, if, you know, it does rain or something like that.
I hear, I understand. No, my request would be either a clear yes going with the waiver because we can start planning in advance, or a want to push decision off at a later time. Um, I think if we do think that if it rains but doesn't rain, it's just too hard for staff to pan around. Um, and I do think talking to Mike, one application will not have major effect. It really takes a full year cycle. To really help set uh the regrowth of the things that we will don't.
Councilor Greider?
I have a question about the reservoirs.
Yeah.
Um. What are the implications of that? I mean, is there possibility that it gets into the water? How does it?
There's not. Our reservoirs are fully enclosed.
Okay.
And all of our reservoirs are actually very far outside of city limits. Uh, and they are all looking effective about them.
Okay.
Um, so the reservoir sites, there's very little likelihood of access by individuals.
Uh huh.
Um, and there's a. I will say our reservoirs are stable, so stable infrastructure we've never built, and so uh the chance of things right at the water is zero.
Sounds like you've looked at most of these, like you've. Chosen these areas carefully as areas that won't. And that would have the least impact.
Yeah, our goal is to try to stay true to the IPM values. Um, while also recognizing that we just have ongoing maintenance needs that we aren't able to keep up with. With the tools we have.
Councilor Penomar?
Um, I'm wondering about, uh, so, so when this came up, I was thinking, you know, highway medians. It's very different from planter beds and, you know, that that people walk by. So I'm just wondering, I'm thinking highway ninety-nine reservoir sites, public works yard is kind of in my mind. In one category, another category is rights of way and non-pollinator planter beds. And and I think what would help, help me um think about this, if there was like a map. Um, or if you, maybe you could show us on a Google map, um, what we're talking about as far as where those are.
Yeah. Would you like me to show you right now or is this something that city council would like me to bring at a later date? Uh, I'll. I know we have a full agenda tonight. It probably just depends where we're going.
And I think if, um, it might be worthwhile if we want to um just do a little extra outreach. I, I appreciate um the need to get this, you know, to get this going. But um I would sure hate um. For kids interested community members to feel like they didn't have adequate notice for it. That said, I I guess I would ask, uh, this is a little off topic, but I would ask, do you feel like you have the means to contact people, interested parties in this?
Um, yes, I can. If we put it to a future council agenda item, I uh can either assign someone else or do it myself or call. Um. Uh, the folks who are aware, uh, Beyond Toxic was aware. The Pollinator Club, um, they were aware, because of Dr. Verinda, but I know, uh, Metal She. Um, is an individual who I did not reach out to as well as Jenny came and talked with the last. But those two, I couldn't fail to provide notice soon.
Councilor Penomar?
Um, can I ask, when did you reach out to uh Beyond Toxic?
We had an email exchange a couple of weeks ago.
A couple of weeks to follow up and I like.
Great.
You know, great.
Um, so if uh if we are going to further discuss it, it might just be. A matter of uh postponing it to a future meeting and then, um. I. I think what I, I would like to know a couple of things if we're, if that's what um the council's going to consider. And actually, even if they don't, um, is. You know, this is, this was such hard-won ground and um and it was, it was a very difficult process. Um. Um, but I, I, my hat is off to uh Councilor Dolan, who did a lot of really great work around this, um, and and accomplished a lot. Um, and. So. I think what I would hope for. Um, at the same time, I I I do feel some sense, I mean, I feel a s- a sense of. Um. The idea that we, we had this IPM and it was, um, it was, you know. The, here is the greatest scenario that we could ask for and, and I I believed at the time that at some point in time we were going to see. You know, the outcome of all of that. And if the outcome of all of that means that we need to make some adjustments. Um, I would hope that we would be able to collect data along the way. So that we can understand, you know, how can we optimize this opportunity for our community? Um, what I, so my question is, if we, if there are compromises made um to our IPM. At this time. Would, would we be able to talk about at the next meeting? Um, data collecting. Uh, and I I would lean on Mike Oxendine for maybe some, and maybe even some research if there is any. So that we can look at this in another year and see, you know, are we doing. The most and the best that we can, um, and I think it would probably also inform some of your. Staffing um studies. Um, but I, I don't know, I just, uh, I would hate to not make that a part of the plan. And and if we're going to pu- put it out for another meeting, maybe we can get some information on what. What data collecting we could do that would help inform. Like long-term solutions, because I think that's what we're going to be facing at some point in time, is having to make decisions on how do we adjust the IPM if we are? And how do we adjust the staff if we are doing that?
Yeah, and so we are currently already collecting, and I'm proud of being able to share with you all the estimate what it pays for us to be able to manually maintain our spaces. Um, and so obviously, if we were to implement any changes, what we'll continue to track is the hours staff spent uh performing certain activities. So how much are we spending on park maintenance? How much are we spending on hiring landscapers to help clean up our, our planter beds, et cetera? Um, the missing piece for all this is the valuation that we're meeting the maintenance level we want. You know, and that's a question that we'll have to have together of, you know, what do we want our planter beds? To look like, at what level of ground maintenance do we want to wear to for our planter beds? What level of ground maintenance we want to adhere to for our parks? Uh. You know, because that then is the clip that we need to start measuring is are we better at maintaining those standards that we want to see in play? With the tools we have. Um, so that would be a future conversation to bring you all to say. Yes, we do want, you know, weed-free connective beds in our downtown area to help. Beautify our ground. Or hey, we're cool, we'll do with a ten percent weed coverage in the planter beds around the facilities. You know, that's when it will have to start, our understanding will be.
My follow-up on that is, um, great. Um, I would, I would hope for um some data collecting on the amount of chemicals that we've increased. And um and the, and also, um, rec- I think you have to keep records of what you spray, right?
And the amounts and then to what dilution.
Yeah, so how we could, how we can bring that back to. Uh, maybe a study in a, in a interim period. In this two-year period would be. I would want to hope for more conversation around that in the next meeting. Um, just so that um we can. Have further discussion on that. Councilor Penomar?
Yeah, um, I'm wondering if part of this discussion uh would be the idea of actually changing what's in the planter beds. In a way so that it kind of makes it a uh a lesser issue or an odd issue. Um, I don't know if if there's uh thoughts, you know, in in this, you know. Community in terms of um trying to avoid pesticides and yet. Meeting the aesthetic needs that planter beds um do for us, if there's alternatives that we could just basically. Creatively um avoid the problem better. So I'm just wondering if that's. Something that y'all have talked about on staff or if that's for that just to, yeah, too far off topic.
No, we've talked about it a couple of times, you know, the, the solutions to low maintenance are typically not for. You know, if you look at city mountain right now, they look at all their planter beds with cement and rocks. And it's. Textured rock pattern.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which we could actually do, though, they have some kind of maintenance time. Um, if that's a look we want our downtown, and that's, you know, great, we can look forward to that. Often kind of left, um. I think sort of for us, that we've talked about, it's just so nice to come flowers to get downtown and see all that. So we're now at a point where the flowers are getting hidden by the weeds and so. Maybe it is time to look at more gravel or concrete.
Yeah, I think it just would be interesting to see what, you know, Ashlyn's experience with that has been and whether, what the reaction of folks. Has been. I mean, I love a good rock, you know, but.
Yeah, and I, I would see that as part of the study that we do over time while the maintenance, while this, while this waiver is in. Um. Is in play, you know, so, so that we could take the time. I would hate to try to come to those discussions in two weeks, but. Um, anyway, I, I, I hope that adds to the discussion a little bit, and maybe we can hear from Mike, what his thoughts are about changing. Um, making more resistant planter beds and what that would actually look like, and is there a middle ground?
Mm-hmm.
Without having to tear up all of our roses or whatever. Um, all right, is there really bright rock? Red rocks. Um, is there any further co- questions or comments about this for now? Um, so I think we uh, we would need a motion to, I'll entertain a motion. Whatever it may be.
I just, I I noticed that Councilor Karen Miller had um her hand up before, I don't know.
Oh, that was, I don't even know what I was going to say. That was like years ago in my brain. Yeah.
Turned my head the other direction. Um, I always say I pay more attention to the councils that are on the side of the city manager because this is usually where I'm facing more. Um, so, okay. Um, does anybody want to make a motion? Councilor Penomar?
Um, I'm going to postpone the discussion um on this matter. Until uh the next uh council meeting.
Second, we have a motion and a second to postpone this matter until the next council meeting. Is there any further discussion? Councilor.
Yeah, I would just say that, um. From my perspective, I think that this is something that we probably need to do, and we heard from the community once on it. I'm not opposed to hearing again, but even the pollinator um group in favor of some of this stuff. Because it's just where we are. So I'm, I'm interested in trying to get. The game plan underway so that the staff could start planning and moving ahead because. It's a, you know, it's an aesthetic thing, but it's also a fire thing. And if it's going to take a year to really get it under control, I don't want to miss this spring as a first opportunity to get started. So that we actually get the bang for the, you know, the buck we're spending here on our political capital to make this decision.
Any other discussion? I just would add that I appreciate, um, I appreciate Councilor Prestizo's um comments uh about. Um, having heard from the co- having heard from the public, I think what I appreciate about. Taking an opportunity to making sure that people have been notified is more about. Wanting to ensure that they, that they know this is on rather than inviting them necessarily to, to speak more, I'm sure they will, but. I, um, I, because of, because of how challenging this has uh been to get to this. Uh, get this um management policy in place, um, I just don't. I don't want to open up opportunity for community members to feel very um. Slided not having had an opportunity to see this on there.
And I agree with that. I'm not close to reaching to the next meeting, but I'd like to try to make sure we're ready to make the decision at the next.
I think that's a good point to make. Um.
I was just going to.
Councilor Greider?
Might skip the next meeting.
Might skip the next meeting, right? And if, if that would put me too far back. In the time moment.
All, all the stuff is that we may be able to have a very uh shortly on the table instead of being the only top team to discuss. Or if Mike says it's not a big deal waiting that every week, then we can push it out. I'll wait for his expertise before I. Please on counter.
Councillor Penomra?
Yeah, I just, I, I think another thing that would help is like a map. Of um the locations of some of those things or um I think that would just help us visualize. And maybe um one of the things I have been thinking about is carving out some of those, some of these locations. And saying yes waiver for these, but not for these. That's, I think that would be helpful.
And I would just suggest that your G I S resource reach out to Ashlyn, because. A few years ago, I was asked to put together a way to monitor this sort of thing for another city based on a model that Ashley did. I don't know if they still use it or not, but I know their staff is still there to provide some insight.
Yeah, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I didn't want to uh bring this into liberation, but um I, I feel very informed about some of the sites that we've talked about in the previous. But less informed about um the reservoir sites in the public works yard and what spot treating will mean for that and. So I, I, if we could just get, hear a little bit more about that at the next meeting, I, I uh, I maybe even see what, I, I can't even imagine visually what. What level of spraying it would take to clear those two sites out and what, uh that's really what I'm curious about. It's like what level of spraying would it take? Um because both of those sites are, and, and what's necessary and what's not. And I'm sure that the staff has thought about that. So I, you know, if you, you're going to get information, councillor.
I was just going to take this opportunity to clarify the, the impression I got. So what I understood when you were explaining the, the visualization was that spray happens. And then the weed whacking happens and then, so they don't grow back. But you still have to do all the weed whacking, even with this application.
Because the weeds are so high currently, we would currently whack them to get down.
Yeah, yeah. The, the reservoir site is interfacing ag land, I think, isn't it? And I.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so I.
Probably on ag and, and some very quick ones with that.
Yeah. Okay, um all right. Thank you, Jordan. Appreciate it and appreciate how patient you're being with us about it. We, I, I, I know for myself, I feel, I feel the weight of what staff's going through. I, you know, I, I say all the time to, to community members, you know. A little rain and you've got another bloom. So you, you know, please be patient, but um I, I know it's a difficult challenge. Um I think we all do. All right, thanks again. Um item number eight point two is consideration of, oh no, I'm sorry, eight point three. If there is not one, we'll start with item number nine point one, which is the request for council discretionary funds. From the Talent Elementary School mural project. All right, is there a staff report on this? Uh just to introduce Rachel to come speak on the request. Rachel, please state your name and city for the record.
Uh my name's Rachel Andres and I've been a talent resident for eighteen years. Uh I, I wanted to thank Hector for organizing it, so I will come and ask you guys. For a donation to the Talent Elementary Community Mural Project. And the reason why I say community is because we know that. It's more than just the, the staff, the families and the teachers and, you know, everyone who just comes in and out of that. School, the school parking lot there at the elementary school. Um it's the soccer tournaments that we have there. The neighbors that are walking their dogs, you know, all over the town. I mean, we're all right in the hub. I'm kind of the community. Neighborhood watch person, right? Uh, you know, it's, I mean, that, I live right there and I will say that the project is really, it was. Originated because we still, we continue to see a blank wall there in the middle of the parking lot. Parents, grandparents, everyone who's raising these wonderful children coming in and out of the, the school that drop off and pick up. Are um someday maybe hanging on, right? Like trying to figure out, I feel like my kids, my daughter goes to, to the elementary school. My son is going into the high school. And they get so much positivity and love poured into them from the staff and, and the teachers inside the classroom. But again. Sometimes it's hard being a parent. Sometimes it's hard being that guardian and just having a, like just some more light there. Reminding them that they've got this, that they're doing the best job that they can. Um and that they have, yeah, and that's really kind of the message we want to send. Um we have, we're going to write. No one is you and that is your superpower. And we're going to have that written in, you know, Spanish as well. And we have. We have organized to have Emily Figaro of Big Leaf Art, who is a local artist, to do the mural. She's kind of done a mock-up here. Uh Ms. Dedrick, who is a first grade teacher at Talent Elementary, has collected all sorts of inspiring words from her first grade class. They're hilarious and wonderful and beautiful too. And so um we're going to have those kind of along both sides. There's, it's a kind of an L, I would say. I did send a video. I hope you were able to access it. I'm. Slightly technic, you know. Was that okay? Did I fix it? Oh, sure, because Heather Lowe is the principal there and she has a great message. And yeah, if you guys don't, if you have a second, that'd be great.
I think, uh, do you want to document it past?
I just wanted to say I really enjoyed the video, but I didn't see the picture that you have there. I was wondering if you could pass that around.
Definitely, definitely.
I'm sorry with Eleanor, though.
Yeah, and this is just a mock-up. It's not even of the whole thing, but it's just gives you a sense of. Who the artist is and the bright colors and the words and just the whole vibe, the trees, the.
And what's the, what's the motto again at the top?
No one is you and that is your superpower. And so um, yeah, I think all of us humans, we need that reminder. And, and so, yeah, we're excited to, to bring this into the community. Um I'll. I'm excited to share that we've raised twenty-five hundred dollars already. Um some of our local, and I should have listed it, I've had it all in my head, but um. We've had some wonderful donors so far. And so um I'm going to be brave and I'm going to say we're. Five thousand dollars short, so whatever you can give. Um still talking to other organizations too and asking other businesses to donate, so don't. No pressure, but whatever you can give to this project, we really appreciate it. We know what all these kids have gone through. And what these parents have gone through too, so.
Councillor Breder?
Um I love that you mentioned that it would also be in Spanish. Is it all the, would all of the wording also be in Spanish?
We're going to have a collection of both the, like the inspirational words too. There's going to be a combo. I don't know if there'll be exactly which and which, but um. We haven't decided that yet. And when I say we, it's principal Lowe from the middle, from the elementary school. Ms. Dedrick and I, we're kind of, kind of, you know. And whoever else wants it to give their input, we don't, you know, we're just excited about it, so.
Any questions? Councillor Penomra?
Not so much a question. I just want to say I really think things like this do make a difference. I, you know, I've spent time when waiting around and my eyes will always go to something and it has an effect. On me. So I, I just think this is, is a great idea. It's a great example of a community um driven effort and I, I think it's. It's lovely and I, I do really hope that it's, it's fully viable and will, um that's, I, you know, I just think that's, that's so great. And um I just want to commend you uh for this great community organizing.
Uh you're, uh, yeah, you're marketing on this. It's been great. I love.
Well, and as I was going to say, do I, the, please share with whoever else that you think is going to. Be open and wanting to be a part of this project. And um I never seen that they don't. And even if people can't, or residents cannot donate. They're even to share. That's like the greatest thing, to share with other people. Um someone just forgot at the vintage, I'm shopping, I gave him the, the handout and someone was ready to donate, so I. Those support, that's important.
Has um, has the Talent Public Arts Committee um seen this?
Yeah, that I, I'm kind of mean yesterday and a great conversation. So they're very excited to share it and, and. Um and they're planning on donating as well.
Awesome. Yeah, great.
County City too, I mean, there's a lot of people, so that County City, they weren't able to donate. You know, with a, the monetary gift, but they are donating, they offered the paint and any other.
Fantastic. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Just that, oh.
Uh councillor Perry Miller?
Thank you. Um just that Emily's work is currently on display at ArtBot. So if folks haven't seen it yet, it's really, really wonderful. Um and then I also just had a question. Is the school district participating in donating time or money to this project?
Well, one of my. Talent, or one of my things is I don't want to be in school for the money. So I mean, the, the teachers, the student. They don't want, they can get to, to carry on and support everyone. So I don't want to pull anything from what the school's been given, what the school has in the budget. I don't want, personally, I don't want to do that. Um but if you know of any other brands that, you know, that we need to pay. Like that's our backup plan, certainly, for those maybe like two or three bucks or something. But we don't have one of these, I'm going to take a lot of that, those funds too. Because those are, thank you so much that within the school. Really, I'm looking for private donors and organization that one.
Let's take a look at this for uh. For the public record.
Hi, everybody. It's Ms. Lowe from Talent Elementary.
And Samantha Dedrick, first grade teacher.
We are here today to talk to you about a really exciting project we'd like to kick off here at Talent Elementary.
Um we are having Big Leaf Fine Arts going um to paint a mural on this beautiful wall behind us.
And we're asking for donations from our wonderful community in Southern Oregon. You can help us beautify our school property by donating to this mural cause.
Our students have been gathering words to become part of the mural. And they've chosen words to reflect the past two years. Our community has been, there's some tough times with. The Alameda Fire and COVID and distance learning. And we just wanted something to celebrate our students, our staff. And our families, of course. Some of the words they have chosen are strong, resilient, kind, attractive, funny and silly. And we would love if you could jump behind this project and donate for this beautiful mural.
Yes, we'd be forever grateful. Thank you.
Well, one of the main reasons why we want to do this is because we want to offer more positivity and more light. To the families that are dropping off and picking up these kids. Um our children are so lucky to have the positivity of the, of the teachers and staff here. But I feel like we need it at the home too. So a part of this is not just for the kids, it's for the families and our community. Just to help bring more light into everyone's life.
We have such great and wonderful families, but we just want you to know that your superpower is being you.
Uh but yeah, your ask was in the agenda. You're good. Yeah, thank you, Rachel, so much. All right, are there any other questions or comments?
Um, I mean, it is June twenty-first. I feel pretty comfortable that this will probably be the last request we have. For council discretionary fund, so I would be comfortable um, you know, giving the full amount that we have to give.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Councillor Perry Miller?
I move to allocate uh one thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars in council discretionary funds to the Talent Elementary School Mural Project.
Second, we have a motion and a second to allocate one thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. To the uh school district project. I, where's the motion?
I am hoping that my copy and paste did not go successfully.
Oh, okay, all right. Uh so uh to allocate one thousand five hundred and twenty. Dollars of discretionary funds to the Talent Elementary Mural Project. Is there any further discussion? Did you get, did you get my, yeah, sorry about that. I lost, I got lost immediately. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank, thank you for what you're doing. It's beautiful. Um okay, uh the next item on the agenda is item nine point two, which uh is consideration of school resource officer contract. For Phoenix Talent School District. Staff support?
Yeah, so Phoenix County School District uh has asked us to participate in, well, come on up while I'm talking, in their school resource officer program. Um that is where Talent PD has an officer at Talent Middle School. Uh to help support uh both kids development, um training, building relationships and, you know, superintendent Barry and. Uh board member Rick Nagel can go into more details as well. Uh so hand the mic to them about their request. They have requested that we change our program to five days a week. And the school district is willing to help fund that position with seventy-five thousand dollars to help make it happen.
Yeah, thank you. Brent Barry, representing the school district, uh Jacksonville. Just want to thank the partnership uh with the city of talent. It's been amazing and especially stronger over the last several years with our, uh going through the kind of movement through September eighth, uh twenty twenty. Um I just want to introduce Rick Nagel uh to talk about the SRO program that we've established in our district for many years. And uh he's very passionate about this. He's been our board member for twenty-four years. And the community asked him to do four more years recently. Um so Rick Nagel.
And this is kind of exciting for me because you're my sister. I live upon Gangville Road, so. You're mine. I can give you a little history, uh if you're interested.
We are.
First of all, uh my own history, I moved to uh Talent Oregon in nineteen forty-eight. Seventh grade and uh I went to Wagon Creek School. And uh then I went to Talent High School for two years, went to Talent Hannah High School. And uh then I finished up at Phoenix for the final two years. But I, I came home. This is my home and, and I am passionate about the. About the SRO program. Uh. Another little bit of history for you. Uh. I joined, as Brent Barry mentioned, in nineteen ninety-nine, I joined the Phoenix Town School Board. But uh. It was shortly after that that Columbine incident occurred. You probably all remember that. And uh there was a, we were asked to, our school district was asked to participate in a conference in Colorado. For, to see how to deal with that sort of thing, that Columbine. And that, that's a criticism, I believe it was April of nineteen ninety-nine. But uh, so a contingent of us went back to Denver and just so I was, I was. Representing the school board. We had a police chief from uh Phoenix, uh the mayor from Phoenix went. Mr. Barrett uh went uh representing the school, Phoenix High School. He was. Assistant principal at that time, I believe. And, but anyway, we, and we came back with two things that were important to protect our kids. And one, we established a, a. Inter-district or inter-agency uh Safe Schools Committee and uh our, our mayor. That has attended that in the past. I remember that. And uh with that, also on that committee are. Sir, court judge. The police department, so both Talent and Phoenix, the uh sure. certain court judge, uh, the police departments of both Talent and Phoenix, the uh sure department was represented. And uh, anyway, our, our goal there was to meet and see what we could do to protect our kids. And uh, the other thing is in SRO program, it's highly recommended by the people back there in in Denver, Colorado. And uh, so that's what we have now. We have uh two SR, one in Phoenix, one in Talent, and one in Talent is at the station just a middle school. I can't, it's, it's a personal thing for me. I, I want to protect our kids. I think we owe it to our kids. When I was in school, it, school was a safe place to go. And couldn't find a safer place. But now, kids do go with little apprehension. And uh, so all, all I could say is that I urge my city council to uh to support the SRO program as much as you can. And I think it's your, it's my obligation to do it for the kids, and it's all, I believe yours. And, and so I appreciate anything. And that's about all.
Excellent, and thank you. And with uh Mr. Nagel's leadership on this, we've, we've uh increased our um funding for, for this position and partnership uh to move from three days a week to five days a week, which really I think gives us coverage for the middle school and also the elementary, because it's uh, we, we have um instances where we need an SRO to, to help with some certain uh situations at the elementary school too sometimes with um with families. So um, we're asking the council to consider that uh increase and uh just enjoy the partnership and, and know that this is my offer.
Thank you. Council Penamra?
Thank you so much for that. Um, I had the pleasure of attending one of those um Safe School Committee meetings. And uh, when I attended, it was some really exciting work uh being done around um security. I think it was the middle school where um, so you, you know, you had to basically, you know, uh, check in and stuff like that, and there was some software around that. And I, I just remember um being impressed um with the way that that, there was a way to kind of protect um the kids from, you know, stranger danger and, and all of that. Um, I'm wondering with these seventy five thousand dollars, is there um, I'm wondering if this was uh where this money's coming from? Was it transferred away from other staff positions, or I'm, I'm just wondering what the thought process was for the school district in, in coming up with that?
Yeah, thanks for that question. Uh, part of it is through a title grant that's uh considers it a well-rounded education and safety development. Uh, and we take it out of our title grant. We've also heard from our community, there's a student investment account that the uh state of Oregon has created, and we get uh dollars that really focused on, on our safety, uh, class size. Uh, you know, we have a partnership with, with it now, and so we're taking some funding out of that as well.
Is that, is that funding that could also go to mental health professionals and, you know, social services and um, I'll tell, and I'll tell you where I'm coming from is I, you know, reading up on this, or it seems like, you know, a lot of the times um, police are kind of being asked to do the work of social workers, mental health professionals. And I know who personally who are very adept at that, but from a, you know, from a um system standpoint, I'm worried um that not funding um positions around, you know, mental health and, and those kinds of boards that I think that kids, um, that kids really desperately need, especially um coming out of COVID these years. So that's kind of, that's kind of what I'm struggling with, Ben.
Yeah, I know, I'll let you, I'll share with you too, and that's a very good point. Um, we have school-based health centers in all of our schools now with our partner with the clinical. We've expanded mental health services uh tremendously in all of our schools, the middle school and the high school, and we're going to increase them again next year with mental health services. The way our partnership with the clinical works is there's a, a pretty good upfront cost, and then it's self-sustaining for them. And so we utilize some of those resources that we've received back because SIA is on a millennium, and we've dedicated, I'm not sure the exact amount, but I think it's about an increase forty thousand dollars over the past years, I believe, commitment, and then this year we put staff.
Council Rider? Sort of to Council Penamra's question, I don't know the, I don't know enough about the difference between an officer and an SRO. Is there, do they, they have a specialized or different training, I would assume, but I could be wrong. Is that?
Yeah, and Chief Snook might be. I think I'm sure that's a little bit better, but I'll talk about this school resource officer as well.
And then I had one other question, since you mentioned it. Um, I was also going to ask about the elementary school, because unfortunately incidents are happening in more and more places nowadays. So would they um, would they sort of share, or they would just be able to walk on over there if something was needed at the elementary school, if that?
Yeah, that's how it's worked in the past. Uh, if our school, so over there, uh, we have, we have, uh, you know, contact over there and they just request that and they come on. And they, and they still, you know, it's truly a resource, uh, because they are, you know, in our classrooms and helping, helping in events, and you're talking about uh kind of what they do as school resource officer, what services they can provide, connect with our families and family events as well. Um, so it's, it's a, it's truly a resource for our families. It's to rather just a police officer in uniform.
Yeah, so for the SRO, we have time, build relationships with the students, take the time to meet the families, try to assist the school as quickly as possible to problem solve some of the issues that we're seeing in the schools. Whereas if a patrol officer inside of a case, they may not have the time to, you know, sit with the families and try to get a positive outcome. Um, SROs have not strictly just enforcement of the laws. It's uh, building the relationships. They have um, you know, the same training standards that we have for regular police officers, but then they also have additional training to um incorporate them in the schools. So they would do uh, you know, specialized training to interview children that are victims of sex abuse. Um, we generally get a lot of those cases, they get reported to us within the schools. So those officers are the ones that handle those investigations, uh, that are able to build those relationships and resources for um, people that may not even be, you know, suspects or victims of a crime, but to assist them on a path to get them the services that they need. Um, you know, we are not labeled as mental health workers, but essentially, we are a component to that um because we can get them the resources as well. Uh, we work with a lot of agency partners in the valley to give them.
Yeah, I think there's one part is a relationship piece, because, you know, over the years as we've, um, you know, we know kids um, you know, have some challenges and sometime, sometimes make poor decision, and it, it's really turned into a restorative process rather than citation-based process and just enforcement, um, and then utilizing resources. Oftentimes, our SROs know more resources than uh a school staff member or an office staff member uh would be able to have off the top of their hand for a family. So um, that's been a, that's been a, you know, significant improvement in, in that process.
Then I just have like one example. Uh, recently, we had one student within the district, and the SRO went to those needs um, to make sure that student had the learning, if they were safe or the living in crimes, and he got out of the little school. So he was trying to get it to where a student can actually very easily issue their, what their possibilities. So, um, you know, I, I think the, the um, people think that it's all about enforcement, it's not. They truly care about students, students, and working with the administration.
And so then I would jump into my section of the staff report, um, which is really, you know, we've had a contract in place with the school for many years. Historically, it's been in a SRO for thirty hours a week with a reimbursement of forty thousand from the schools. You know, due to talent staffing, this year was the, this year and a half was the first year and a half we've been fully staffed, which is awesome. But even the employee staff were only able to get an SRO in the classroom, maybe twenty hours a week max. Um, and that's arguably, they're also on shift at the same time that they're the SRO officer. And so they're responding to uh nine one one calls uh while they're also serving as the SRO position. So the options outlined in the staff packet, sorry, in the staff report and the agenda packet on the screen for any of is just some options to consider. Um, you know, the cost from officers about a hundred thousand, one hundred and twenty four thousand a year total. Um, so with the school pitching in seventy five thousand dollars, you know, we could hire a separate position just for SRO and keep them on full time, and we would then have a mobile patrol officer in the summer, which is our busiest time of the year. Uh, we typically need additional shifts since folks are out on vacation, where we have extra patrols during uh high fire risk events. Um, I will share with you, we, we contacted Ashland, whenever we need patrol shifts covered, um, that's fifteen hundred dollars for shift, and we typically spend fifteen to twenty thousand a year on that Ashland overtime coverage. Another option is we could hire an SRO position just for the academic school year. Um, that seventy five thousand really covers the costs. The cost would be about ten thousand in addition to that buffer for that weight. Um, and third option is we could continue what we're doing now, which is staffing to the much extent we can possible in the schools, likely hit about that twenty to thirty hour a week attendance at the school for system. And then finally, of course, it's always the city's option to choose not to put state in this program, and that option is also on the table for you.
Council Prestizo?
So when you refer to the nine point five month uh FTE, does that mean you would try to hire someone for just nine point five months?
You would ask for a position that's only for this academic school.
Okay, I'm just wondering what the likelihood of that being sustained over time, and you know, that, that person staying in that position, or if that would be kind of one of these revolving doors.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll let Jen answer that one, because she knows kind of what the hiring pool is like for.
Ideally, um, that would usually still over like her retirement, you know, maybe where a person is struggling to, still wants to work, wants summers off. You know, you're, you're still, still employed, but it, it may be a little problematic when you're a bit, um, when there's an option.
Councilor Rider?
Yeah, I'm just so interested in, like you said, the right fit. Um, is this something where it, there is a different selection process than just like choosing from a pool of officers? I mean, how, how do you, you?
Yeah, there's certain criteria that would be met. And one of those is ideally, they would have a minimum of five years of experience. Just in their experience in the job, pretty grounded, um, so much as you're cast. Yeah, I was too, I'm dealing, um, right now, starting, who has ten plus years of law, which has been uh, is all like within the schools, dollars, I've been, I recently, um, we shot a person, assistant principal, and doing this, uh, putting on a, you know, great reviews regarding law. So, um, you know, something that I stay connected in, I'm sure that they are continuing to be good. We haven't have, like, many applicants applied in the process, but certainly we have a lot of us.
Would there be interest for that current person to move into that position? I mean, would that be a possibility if they were?
There's a possibility, probably for promoting their in school years, so we're paying that. You know, there's, depending on which option you're choosing, you know, volume.
Do you have a recommendation, Chief? On these options?
Well, option one would be, um, that would allow us to dedicate that position. Um, and then to also use our staff, most, you know, Jordan said some of them. Usually, a lot of people, they, they SRO, you have to give them patient time in the summer anyway, by the contract. So, you know, a lot of our officers are taking their vacation time in the summer, which, you know, leaves us a little strapped. Apparently, so the SRO would also, a summer break and starting to use, uh, you know, passing on some of their, as coordinator, um, duties to them to get us more better prepared. So, um, so you know, there's always, there's always work that needs to be done. It's just hard for us to do it with that, with the SRO within our, a lot of slots. It doesn't leave a lot of room for us to grow our sound, wanting to get out of this, free that, to improve our skills, send out to more training. So there, there's definitely, I was, at some point, I would also, with the city management, you know, our staff has a problem. Entire ten or four years, like, of course, has a problem, when you have a meeting for, yes, or it's a special position to also work almost in this situation.
Any other questions? Council Prestizo?
Just um, how prepared is the city to make up their portion of the cost if we went with the option warrant?
Yeah, it would fit within the current uh budget allocation that we have. You know, it, it really depends on what the union contract negotiations come out of. If they will be what we expect, then uh, you know, it will be, if you go for option one, you know, the cost of the city would probably be anywhere from thirty to forty five thousand for the condition, but would also save us likely ten, fifteen thousand of what we're paying right now for overships, whether. So for me, if you go for twenty to thirty five thousand dollars, it's a chance for the city to have additional relief in our low high need period, which is during prime season. At the same time, while providing a strong partnership with schools who are under access. Is the school prepared? This is just for one year right now. It, so the seventy five thousand is questionable beyond this year?
Yeah, those are sustainable funds. Some will be, will be entitled grants, and SIA will continue, so we can still redirect those uh for that. And, and really seek out, I think, our, you know, board is looking at potential other grant funding to that, that we can leverage.
It would be ongoing. We would, we would hire the normal one-year contract, uh, but there could be funding for on, you know, if the school district wants to continue with an additional contract, if the city wants to report with a bit.
I just have a curious question. Do SROs receive special training for working with kids?
They receive advanced training, the street go conferences, um, started with even, I guess, thirty seven, um, two, one, two conferences, the special ones. I'm sorry, no, it was before, before calls, um, critical incidents, responses tomorrow, we're checking mass critical incidents. Never, um, PD and effort, so make sure this is, um, and it happens, uh, when I'm in a shooter, it's all about the lawless world. So, uh, it's, it's ongoing, you know, just not training. And we are, our goal is to take away from the training tomorrow, with the, for them, uh, to our schools.
We've been very fortunate, and you may know, early on, that we were, SROs, uh, really in the nation, and we strive to be a local nation, so, and you serve the best in the school. He's the one that does all the, all the very things that it varies.
He is most, if I can just add one additional thing, is right now, SROs, we have schools, um, three days a week. This is for the second part of the week, there's one more, there's the other two days, um, these are the two. This, basically, the show we handle is all, uh, yes, or it was built in the kitchen, you know, that are, you know, the quality, because I have to go to these schools. And so, um, the new, probably, uh, this, the problem is that we need, we need to, is, is, of course.
I have another curiosity question first uh for staff. Um you uh you Lehman was just promoted to sergeant on, on our force, right? For, for talent PD. And so you would be looking to hire a, a different officer to fill that one FTE?
If we go with option one or option two, uh we would hire specifically for a school resource officer position and we would really encourage Lehman to apply.
Well, I just want to say that um I, I, the thing I, I appreciate about option one. I, I'm just going to say I'm married to a teacher who speaks highly of Officer Lehman. Uh at the middle school and, and uh and speaks to the benefits that you all three have spoken to tonight. Um and that the relationships are important and that they, they work in a lot of, a lot of ways. Um I appreciate the idea of option one, um because I think that the concerns that. Some community members have about policing in general are often um. Responded to with additional training and what you're suggesting in your recommendation is that. Um one of the things that option one provides for is relief for officers. Who may be on vacation or getting additional training and I think that that is. I think that that is solution oriented. I, and I appreciate that about option one um as opposed to option two. Uh I don't see any other option uh worth considering, in my opinion. Uh so between the two, I do appreciate that option one would provide for more space and room to do some additional training and. And uh and also uh offer those relief um during vacations. So.
Well, it sounds like if, it sounds like some of these trainings are over the summer. So if they were off, they wouldn't be able to attend like this one you're doing tomorrow. Um if they weren't working during that time, they wouldn't be able to participate.
It would be a little problematic for us to move our policy as well as state requirements to keep people certified. So um we don't, we don't have a lot of structured one staff who are departmentalized. Um you know, sometimes we're, we're seeing other agencies training scheduled and I think they got. So what's your answer is we would miss out on some. We would miss out on some of the state unit trainings as well as achieving education.
Yeah, my, I, I didn't mean to start deliberating, but I really did have also a question is that um. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly that it would afford our communities more space for. Just regular training or additional training? Any other questions or comments?
Um this is like, I'm still stuck on one of the things that, that you said, Brad. Folks having that uh knowledge and access to resources within school.
Yeah, it is might, it might have a research and say, hey, this is well, uh whether it's. Whether there's an additional service or, you know, mental, or they can help that family. Uh go down with the health services. So um there's been a few examples, but I mean, I can send that some. Get some anecdote and send them to you. Um but it's just, I mean, you get a connection and partnerships around. You know, the value of resources for family. We're expanding that with our community care grants, uh which is very amazing.
Yeah, I, I was just, you know, I would hope that the schools would have, you know, knowledge of or access to all the things that are out there. Although I realize there might be some that's like specific to law enforcement, but that might be. I, I keep thinking mental health courts. I don't know if that's, is that what we're talking about? But, but anyway, it's just, it was, I'm glad to see that the schools are, you know, growing, growing that.
Yeah, and of course, that's true. The social service, what is happening for uh in our community care grant, just in its first years, really.
I have another question. Did I hear you say that Sergeant Lumen was interested in? Does he like option one or option two?
I know, I've, I've talked to him about it. That's why I just, you know, I just thought that would be like. Just to counsel Ryder's point, I think, you know, it's really important, the person. Is, is really the training, of course, all of that, but the person also is really, really important. So that's why I was kind of wondering if I heard that correctly, Jordan.
I would say, I would say that the SRO role is one of Lehman's favorite parts of the job.
But he doesn't want the summer off.
I do have somebody that is not ordinary to me, that has many years of experience, that shows in the years. Otherwise, no, I really have a young team.
Partnering with the school district to help make that selection of the right candidate.
One last question is a hundred for me. Uh it's a hundred to a hundred and twenty K, fully burdened. Is that okay? Um Counselor Panamera?
Um I'm just wondering whether I, I wouldn't want to, for example, if you're finding the ideal person, I wouldn't want to. Um you know, botch you in if that person maybe was only interested in. A nine month or only interested in a twelve month. I, I guess what I'm saying is, um would we be able to pass this in such a way that? The hiring of folks would have some flexibility to make sure they, they get the right person?
Yeah, but if you go with option one, that would give us the flexibility to negotiate until we can do less than four months. If we go with option two, we would not have the ability to do more than that in half months.
And I, and I just sort of say, I do understand that and see that about filling the gaps. It's really important.
I think you'd want to just modify the, modify the motion for up to twelve months. Because it, it pretty clearly says that it would be for twelve months. If that's the flexibility you're looking for. Any other questions or comments? I entertain a motion. Counselor Prestizo?
Uh I moved to implement option one and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with. Phoenix Talent School District for a school resource officer for twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four.
Second, we have a motion and a second to implement option one and authorize the city manager to execute. And it could be agreement with Phoenix Talent School District for a school resource officer for twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Uh can I just say?
Yeah.
Um thanks for coming down here, all of you, and it's always great to get um extra information and more perspective. So thank you for answering the questions in the presentations.
Um and I'll tell you, uh I think that Officer Lehman speaks highly for this request and, and. Um yeah, I mean, my, my interactions with them have been stellar. Congratulations, board member. Uh with ankle. We will, yeah, we were following it with faded breath. All right, the next item on the agenda is item. Uh nine point three, uh resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven. Zero dash R acknowledging the fiscal year audit for the period of ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Staff. And I quickly done the correction there. We do have still a previously known as nine point one, resolution point point three dot oh six nine. Oh, whoops, but I can tackle oh seven others first.
Uh no, let's just go ahead and uh sorry, back up. You're right. Uh a resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero six nine dash R. On canvas of the vote of the special election. Staff.
Um yeah, so this is our whole resolution that canvases the vote, meaning that we recognize. For the city of talent thousand measure that was on the special election of May sixteenth, um twenty twenty-three. Uh so this resolution simply recognizes what that vote count was and officially completely in our cover record. Uh similar to what we did during the elections uh in November.
Great. Uh any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion. I have a comment real quick. Thank you to the staff for all your hard work. Any, uh I'll entertain a motion of, yeah, Counsel Perry Miller.
I moved to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero six nine dash R. On canvas of the vote for special election of May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Uh we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero six nine dash R. On canvas of the vote for the special election of May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um okay, now uh what would be now nine point four is resolution twenty twenty-three. Dash zero seven. Zero dash R acknowledging the fiscal year audit for the period of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Staff.
So uh the fiscal year audit for the state account, fiscal year period twenty-one to twenty-two has been completed. We have received another clean opinion. Uh we have, we have had more efficiency in our audit, when our financial statements uh. Are clear and fair representation of what our cash base and balance is. Uh but also, we did have uh two who keys that were identified. Uh within that audit, they don't rise to the level of efficiency, but I did want to just highlight that since they are uh. In the man that letter that you will receive before the letter. And that was a moment where we spent more than what we had appropriate budget. Uh and this was due to a mistake because it was my comfortable first month in my role. And we had passed on city council in motion to reallocate funds and the correct procedure would have been a resolution to reallocate those funds. Uh so that was my chance to learn and so we'll correct that moving forward. The auditor also to make some general recommendations for us, it's been their review of our processing procedures. And we have actually moved forward implementing all their recommendations. Uh already as well. The last thing I want to highlight is tested the line, our finance director put together this amazing report. It's called a popular annual financial report. It's in a stat packet who will also be posted on our website with the audit. And the idea is that they more easily understandable packet of what the audit says. The additional, in addition, some other fun items like a list of our major accomplishments that we accomplished in twenty-one, twenty-two. Some fun trivia facts about talent and just a way for our community to have more transparency and access to what we do and who we are. Um our goal is to uh, we're already working on twenty-two, twenty-three period, which is, we're already trying to have a big standard. That looking for, we have simple things that are available, but very nice.
Counsel Panamera?
I just wanted to say, I, I saw that and I thought it was great. Definitely put it on the website.
Yeah, any other comments? Um I just want to say, a clean opinion note efficiency is always a great audit to see. Um Taunt has had a pretty good historical record in that regard and there's always. Auditors just can't write a report without making some recommendations. I just think it's part of their thing. Um but uh congratulations to the city. Uh that's, uh that's a feather in our cap. Um all right, uh and thank you to Tessa, please. Um I'll entertain a motion.
Counsel Perry Miller? I moved to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven zero dash R acknowledging the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two audit.
Second.
Um we have a motion and a second to adopt twenty twenty-three dash zero seven zero dash R acknowledging the fiscal year. Twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two audit. All those, uh any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, that's right. It's a resolution. I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Um Counsel Panamera?
Yes.
Counsel Redder?
Yes.
Counsel Prestizo?
Yes.
Counsel Barr Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I'm going to go back to uh resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero six nine dash R and act for roll call vote, please.
Counsel Panamera? Counsel Redder?
Yes.
Counsel Prestizo?
Yes.
Counsel Barr Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I have nine point. Five is consideration cavity selection of contractor for water rate study. Staff?
Yes.
Um so the city posted a request for proposals to have a professional firm help us assess our water rates. Our water rate structure and as well as to uh present the city with a great model that we could use for planning. Uh up to five or ten years in advance of what our water rates uh should be to help maintain a healthy water system. Um we did have two professional firms apply. Um we do recommend uh HDR Engineering. They were the highest ranked contractor. And they were also the contractors within budget, what was budgeted for this coming fiscal year for this project. Um HDR Engineering is also a firm that has been working with other jurisdictions in the area. So we were able to get some good uh reviews and referrals from other jurisdictions as well. Um so the question today is to, for us to move forward with noticing of the award of the contract. Um we did budget sixty thousand, so the, the quote for minute fifty-five. The extra five thousand will just give us some leeway for the addition of the eighty-five we need during the process.
Thank you, Jordan. Any questions, Counsel Panamera?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we, we may have already done this, but at what, at what point would we um kind of uh direct that study? For example, if we wanted to make equity impart again or, you know, some coverage for folks who can't afford a.
Exactly, and so the way the process works with this six to eight month process. And then we'll actually invite, involve a lot of city council meetings to have discussions. The reason we asked for a rate uh structure assessment, so typically these, these. Studies really just look at the water rates themselves and not how we actually apply our rates to different customer classes. Um it's because we wanted to make sure we had a rate structure that A supported water conservation. But B supported uh equity and water access, particularly super perfect route from the city council. The one to make sure that we have a uh enough water for folks to live on uh as a key component of being a low cost. And so the entire purpose of that structure assessment is for that authority review. And that will be coming before you all at different stages. So you look at different models and to ask, no, the impact of each model. On different perspectives.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Counsel Panamera?
I moved to award the contract to HDR Engineering. For the water rate study and grant the, uh grant the city manager authority to execute the contract. With not to exceed the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the contract to HDR Engineering Incorporated for the water rate study and grant. The city manager authority to execute the contract with a not to exceed amount of sixty thousand. Um is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine point six, consideration of deep depot building lease renewal for Jackson County Communities Long Term Recovery Group staff.
Yes, so uh Jackson County Long Term Recovery Group is currently granting the upstairs to depot building. Uh and the city is providing in pain rent to them as part of our participation in the regional recovery land process. Um they had a conflict tonight and so representative couldn't be here and I realized late to the last. Um, they had a conflict tonight and so representative couldn't be here and I realized late to the last meeting we could have. To make sure, uh, we consider our lease renewal before their lease is up June thirtieth. Um, so originally we entered into this rent agreement with J C C L T R G as our participation in the regional plan recovery process. Um, at that time, we anticipated that project to be completed, uh, by this time, it has been delayed. And they do anticipate the need for another three to six months for completion. Um, the long-term recovery group is also discussing, uh. What their role is after the project is complete. Um, so their request is to provide them with a twelve-month lease with continued terms. Um, given the space time, figure out what their role is posted. Uh, but they're also comfortable with, uh, six monthly moving forward, uh, since that is the current trajectory for the regional plan recovery project. Council Paramiller.
Um, so if we did go with a six-month lease, um, would it just come back to us if they shared that they had a need to continue to use that space?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Greider?
I realize they don't have a representative here, so it's not maybe a question that can be answered, but, um. As this is our contribution. I'm curious what. Other jurisdictions are offering as contribution, this is very, seems very generous. Um, and I see the, the rate is increasing, um. Next year, yeah, I'm just, I, I would be curious about that, but that's just, but I'm happy that they're here and I'm glad that we're able to, to provide that for them, but.
And then we're happy to answer, so, uh, Phoenix, for example, they donated cash to the project through their M WAP brand. It was a line item within their M WAP funding.
Okay.
And I think they, it was a total of about a hundred to a hundred and fifty K.
Oh, okay.
What they contributed.
Great.
And admittedly, Phoenix is the only one I know off the top of my head.
Yeah.
And just so you know where this monthly rent amount comes from, this is just the city's process for our books. It is the market rate rent for the space. And so whenever we're giving a donation to the use of our space, um, we record it on our books as a donation to the amount of what it would have been in market rate. Council Penamra.
Yeah, I, I'm so glad that they are able to use that, I'm so wondering if there are, um, are there other nonprofits that are interested? From using that space, like my understanding is said that there isn't a lot of office space in talent and I'm just wondering. Um, what the need is, um, generally.
And I might, uh, request deflecting that question to the mayor. Through her role as the P B A president may know more than I do.
Okay.
You know, I work to share my anecdotes, although I have, I don't have a great assessment of what's out there. Um, we, the city was approached at one time by Travis and Morgan who were looking for office space. They were able to find office space and so, uh. It was fine that we had the depot building already rented. Uh. And that's the one anecdote I have for demand right now, um. Yeah, okay. It's funny, I did have a conversation with a developer today. Who is thinking about commercial development and talent. And, um, he was, he gave me some really great information about, uh, the cost of, of office space and, um, the cost of leasing office space. And how it's impacting, um. Occupancy, and so occupancy in the market is low at this point in time and it's. Uh, so there's a lot of vacancy. Um, so the current market is. High vacancy. According to this developer, I'd have to, it's interesting that we had that conversation just today and he, he's very qualified. Yeah. And that's what he does, is commercial development.
To clarify, I was, I was thinking more in terms of, uh, of a nonprofit that, you know, is working towards. The, the kinds of city goals that we're working towards, like, you know, like we do with, uh, Home Street. So I was just wondering if there was, uh, there were other opportunities along those lines.
Yeah, I may have misunderstood.
No, no, that's fine, I, I'm glad, it's really interesting information, all this, and that kind of is, it does involve commercial space as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just kind of the overall condition of the market is that building and, um, the cost of building is driving up the rates of for, um. For leases and so. Um, you know, market rates are going up and it's just, it's just making it difficult for profit, for profit and nonprofit.
So that space may be vacant. Or not. Don't need it.
Yeah, I don't know, but it's hard to say, I, um, it's. That is one conversation about, uh, but as Jordan mentioned earlier, last year, um, it seemed like. Um, people couldn't find a, a space to be here. At all, so. Um, I think probably, uh, the lack of spaces, uh, in this art area, I mean, uh, I was probably creating, uh, artificial demand, if that makes sense. So I just give you two answers, I hope that, that works for you. Um. Um, yeah, I just want to say, I, you know, that the work that they are doing is, is good work and, um. And, uh, you know, I think we all agree with. Um, having skin in the game. Is, uh. Is important, especially given, uh, the recent study that they're producing and all of that. Um, all right, is there any, Council Perry Miller?
Um, yeah, I think I totally agree that the work that they do is incredibly valuable to our community. I'm a little bit torn between six and twelve months, I mean, if they say that they have six months of work to do. That does seem like an attractive option to me, especially if we could just reassess if they do end up needing the space. For longer, um, just because, you know, there are a lot of other nonprofits. That, you know, struggle to find. Space in our community, so that's, I'm torn.
Council Penamra.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with six months, we can always extend it to twelve months. So I, I'm, I'm more comfortable with that, six months is what I would think.
Can we add that to the motion? That it could be reassessed?
Well, I think that's automatic.
Or is that just? That's automatic, you know, the way our city practices in the red states, if we owe personally offer a renewal of lease, whoever their current tenant is. Uh, before we allocate it to other current employees. All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Council Perry Miller.
I move to approve the depot building lease agreement with the Jackson County Communities Long Term Recovery Group. For a term of six months and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the DP, depot building lease agreement with. Jackson County Long Term Recovery Group for a term of six months and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, I just want to shout out myself, we're getting through that rearrangement and.
Um, I do actually have a comment.
Yeah.
Uh, I attended a, a meeting at, at that, uh, that office space and if y'all get a chance to go, it's kind of, it's kind of, it's really nice, it's fun. Um, one thing that was really amusing is they have something called an owl. Which is this tech, tech, techie device that basically you're in a room full of people and you're sitting at the edge of the table, you think nobody can see you. But theirs is out and as soon as you talk, your picture's up there, uh. Just as equal to the host for the rest of your thing, anyway, um, it's a nice space and, uh, they have good meetings.
It is a nice space. Um, all right. All right, number ten, it is commission and committee reports, anybody have any? Commission and committee reports? Council Perry Miller.
Um, T-PAC continues to meet. As often as they possibly can, they just love to get together and, uh. Um, yes, they'll be very thrilled about, uh, Amanda's appointment, they continue to work on long-term planning and, um. Were, they were all very grateful for, uh, the council approving their full budget request. At the last meeting, um, which they knew was significantly larger than some of the other commissions asked for, but they have big plans, so. That's about it.
Fantastic. Anybody else? Um, just that planning hasn't, uh, planning didn't meet in May and they're not, uh, gonna meet in, um. Well, they met in May, uh, but didn't have a quorum and they're not meeting in, in June, uh, so we'll have some updates next time. Um, Jordan, do you have an update on, um, what's happening at parks with the, um.
Dog survey?
The what?
The dog survey?
No, but the, I'd love to hear about that. Just an update, an update about parks would be good, but the labyrinth, yeah, the labyrinth.
Elaborate.
Yeah.
So, uh. Yes, and I actually attended the last park special meeting, so I'll give you a quick just rundown of what we discussed.
Great.
Um, I, my phone lasted through, I think seventy percent of it, so there could be facts I missed. Laughin has not returned yet to the parks, you're kind of some design. Uh. Recommendation from them. And so I think, uh, Ted Hilton Walker, who's currently working on it, is still working on doing some groundwork and research before getting ready for that kind of design proposal. Um, the other major topics discussed at parks, uh, was the, they were very excited to hear the ARCA funding allocations to the. Uh, staple or the skate park here and the tennis court redesign. Their recommendation to staff, although I didn't make it formally, is to move forward more quickly with the skate park. Uh, as a priority, given the high use of it, as well as the fact that it was listed earlier in our parks master plan. Them and tennis court rebuild. And then lastly, they posted a community survey about dogs in Chuck Roberts Park. Um, there's been a lot of community discussion about that right now, particularly phone calls are getting at city hall. They had over a hundred, uh, respondents. And they wrote up this really awesome report, just summarizing what the results were. Uh, and so they are going to be publishing the results in the talent news review. Um, so if not, uh, by this Friday deadline for the next month. And Council Bio did ask them to, uh, bring a slightly different format before the parks makes a vote for recommendation. Uh, the two recommendations that came out of the subcommittee were to either A allow leash dogs in part with Chuck Roberts Park. Um, or B, when the lease is up for the little league fields, convert that space to a large dog park. To address that. So that'll be becoming for Parks Commission at their next meeting and then for council after that recommendation.
Great, um, anybody else on committee and commission, uh, Council Penamra?
So, um, together for talent, my knowledge has, if you haven't had any more applications, there's still two people, so they haven't been able. To me, but. Think they're talking about, um, having a recycling with it, it's a lot of help from the city staff, so that's great. Um, I, what I'd like to do is, is I think might be a good opportunity to do a little bit of a push. Um, the way we did for traffic, um, to, to get some folks on and I can, um. Maybe help with that as far as just kind of the graphic and the flyer.
Great.
Um, yeah, to, to, because we do want to make sure that it's, it's clear that the, the, you know, the. The lifeblood of it is, is really sustainability, um, you know, all, all of those, all of those things is what we work on. So this event is, it would be actually a natural. Draw, I think, for, for people who would really enjoy that kind of work.
Right, so, yeah, even a little blurb on, you know, mission statement of core focus.
Sure.
Help us, uh, get the word out. Uh.
Absolutely.
It's all very wide open and so it's, uh.
Yeah, yeah, it is, and, and I think also that should be made clear, because I think, I, I had read something that originally, same thing you had read, Mayor. That it sounded like anybody could join, anybody in the world could join, um, but I think that it's. The, the way the ordinance ended up, it still is fairly open in that it's. Um, that even if you just like have a business in talent, um, you can join, or is it? Yeah, okay, great, I just would like that to be clear, because I think it'd be also nice, nice to get some kind of cross pollination. I mean, tended with, uh, Phoenix and, you know, uh, the surrounding area, so. Awesome.
Uh, uh, you know, since we're talking about outreach for committee and commissions, maybe looking at any other openings, just to. Um, I don't think there are any that I can think of, but. What is it?
The economic commission.
Yeah, uh, we, I think we have a game plan for that, that we're not ready to pull the trigger on, but it is a pretty, I think. Uh, a pretty good idea. All right, that's it for committee and commission reports, uh, I do want to, um, just give a shout out to Hector for a great job on, uh, the summit meeting. Uh, for the fifth Wednesday, um, I thought it was really informative and, uh, was enjoyable and. Um, I do want to see, uh, us. Uh, spread the, spread the wealth around with, um, the food that we provide, um, I love the grano. And I, and, uh, by the way, that was the first time I had their, um, gluten-free pizza and that was pretty dang good. Um, but, but I, uh, for somebody who focuses on local businesses, just. Kind of doing circulation around, um, I think would be, would be good. Um, but I already mentioned that at one point in time, so, um, but thanks again, uh, it was really nice and it was well-run and well-organized and really appreciated that. I thought it was very impactful. And look forward to doing more. Um, also, item number eleven, other business or future agenda items, anybody? Council Penamra.
I'm just curious about, um, the website, I, you know, I, I'm just wondering when we're gonna see that, when it's gonna be, the switch will be flipped. Well, let's see the final, I mean, I saw it, it was beautiful, but when, we're gonna have it.
I, I think we already have that, didn't we already get the link to the, the beta site? Oh. Oh, but not flipped the switch yet?
Yeah.
Okay. I did have a question about it earlier, uh, speaker on non-agenda item, uh, um, the, uh, the person that was talking about the swimming pool said that she wasn't getting any cooperation from the city. Does anybody know what that means?
I will follow up with her, from, uh, what I heard, it was mostly that they had been interacting with, uh. Zach Moody and that was prior to having a code enforcement officer in place. I thought we'll follow up to see when her latest communication with the city was. We have received, I don't know if Jen received any phone calls, but.
I don't have, I don't remember her.
Okay. Yeah, okay, I will follow up and see where we are at with, uh. If it's, I will admit, if there's nothing within our ordinances that limit or say what the, um, infringement is. The city can't take action, you know, against enforcing codes that are. Yeah, so I'll double check on that one and, uh, recognize it's the planning commission potentially to take that second place. Thanks.
Um, Council Penamra.
Yeah, along those lines, I'm remembering, I think this might have been a conversation of more than a year ago. About, um, setting up some sort of thing where the city could actually, um. Kind of host, you know, uh, help resolve neighborhood disputes, um, in a neighborly way, um. Is, did that, um, have you heard anything about that?
Well, we have, yeah, I'll let Jen speak to that, yeah.
Um, we have, I resolved, uh, most of this, um. Compromiseation.
Uh-huh.
So we refer the whole to them.
Okay.
Um, consists of like this, I believe. Did, and that I'm just sure, um, I've dealt with some of those complaints myself and. Uh, so, so we did refer to that, to this.
That sounds really, really great, I'm wondering though, is it like? Cost, does it cost money, is that why people don't do it? The, the biggest issue that I hear from Doc round, I resolved is that both members have to voluntarily agree for the space. And oftentimes people, uh, one or at least one of them is to not put the space in the mediation process.
We even tried to give them a waiver as well, I mean, some, yes, that's what they were.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I guess what I'm hearing though is that, um, if you were out. At some of those calls as well, um, that we, that we were not, not cooperative, like that, that made my hair stand up.
So, um, I believe this, it does be fact as I'm, um, create a modifier. When we started this call on, uh, in like, um, that community needed, uh, with, we need to all, and pass to ensure that. You know, we are, uh, not over looking, um, unfortunately. We have to make that a wish, but we're totally.
Yeah, yeah.
But some of the codes we're not experts on, so we may not be able to, to assist us to see if those complaints are. You know, warrants, wanting, or force point, um, some of the things in the recent. Um, some of the things we just said were, well, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to.
Yeah. All right. Well, it sounds to me like, like the city was being cooperative. I just, I'm just, I'm just glad to hear that there was, that, that they, that, you know, once in a while you hear, I was completely ignored and, um.
Hey, it sounded to me, what I interpreted was, but it was previously. It didn't sound like currently she felt that she wasn't getting.
Well, unless she's interacting with you now, what I'm, what I heard, what I thought I heard her say was I, I reached out. And I didn't get any cooperation.
Well, I think what happened when she reached out, she was picking up the key word.
Well.
Now, she really wants that answer, which I can understand. I mean, she's, I have a lawyer, so she's been willing to.
I'm just glad we, we're not ignoring.
Yeah, I will say this reminds us, we have a code enforcement officer for time on staff. It's Doc. Who used to do all of our facilities maintenance. He is wonderful and comes at it with like a heart of compassion. He. Uses his own time to go help we back someone's property for someone who was not able to care for it themselves. It was just easier to help him out than it was to code enforce on him. So.
I do have one more question. I'm sorry because I know it's late and everybody wants to go home, but, um, I meant to talk about this at our Monday meeting, but we didn't have one, but Phil Lanny put something on social media about. Us destroying like property along the edge here and I just, um, yeah, what, what's the deal there?
Yeah, so we, uh, contracted the justice group to do some of the maintenance work that we're not able to keep up with. And so we have a justice group come out and clear out that area because it was just so overgrown. Uh, we were getting some fire hazard complaints as well as, um. You know. Suspect going on, going on there. They did do much more of a butcher job than we expected. Um, so we were able to provide that feedback. Uh, we look forward to that growth growing back and returning.
You, oh, the growth, did you say you look forward to the growth coming back?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. That, that none of the, we did check it out. None of the plants have pair actions, so we do hope they return.
And will we be using the justice group again?
Probably not for that specific project.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha. Okay, but, um, okay, that's great. That's a good, thank you.
Was this along front?
Front street along the railroad tracks.
Okay, on city side or on property, private property side?
City side.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I am glad to hear.
Side of Front Street.
I'm also glad to hear that we responded to the complaints about the overgrowth and the, you know, the, um, probably activities going in the hiding places and all that kind of stuff. So that's good to hear. Um, all right, uh, Counselor Piscito?
Um, I've talked to Jordan about this and, um, I recently got one of those letters that the gentleman earlier advised me of, um. Needing to put a backflow convention device in. Which makes sense, but it was an interesting experiment for me and way, 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 way more costly than I would have done. It didn't cost me quite as much just because I. Know some contractors, I'm there, sure, I'll be partnering towards people who. I can work with and I did my own ditch digging and a lot of, they bought some, very myself, right? When I first made my first few calls with Palmer, we're talking excess of a thousand dollars. And, um, and, and which is a lot. People on a fixed income or higher ease, um, or just low income, that's. And they get a letter that says, you know, you have, today's a turn off the water. Um, and so I'm just wondering if there's some way we could, uh. Find a way to, uh, alleviate some of the financial burden and also talk to the person who told the test. But, and, uh, it was an interesting conversation. Apparently. This person has had a lot of conversations with people and they said, it's just that basically what was. Should have, could have been better. She, people are really, I saw. But she said, once she explained. Why it's important, you go, oh, that makes sense, but it didn't really have a prospect. Some of the papers I got were, you know, it's really a state requirement and notice that we save the balance. It wasn't really. Like he said, it wasn't really a time to notice. Um, so anyway, but I'm hoping that we can review some of the lessons and. Be if there's some way we can help. Consider it, if some of the people who are going to find it, please, you know, we can buy a ship.
And counsel, you know, so I just got to make the water commission to get copies of their letter language so that we can update ours. Uh, to better reflect and then talk with the others about what they do for offsetting the cost of that.
Yeah.
So look forward to future conversations on that.
I'm glad to hear that because you reached out to me about this and, and I do want to share, it costs me $1,200 to put in. A backflow device, even though I had one. And even though I'm not connected to TID, like I have TID water rights, but I'm not connected to it. And so I still, the state's still required and I, I let it go because I, I realized the city doesn't have any. Um, but it did, um, it did. Make me feel like, um, there are probably a lot of people, I mean, $1,200 was a lot of money and there are probably a lot of people who couldn't. Afford that and, and I'm wondering if the city can say something about it or is there any influence we can have? Over, like, is there any flexibility in this rule or did we just get ex, you know?
Well, I would say I did have a couple of these conversations and I didn't get the name of it, but where it was the talent. The partner, I think that's what it was that I spoke to. And, um, with the, with the problem thing, uh, it was like, are you connected to TID? I said, no. He said, well, you don't need one. And I said, well, they say you can do for irrigation. So I followed it, it was explained, state regulation that. For TID, you actually need a more expensive device for just irrigation, you get where you're for $200.
Um, well, it's still cost $1,200 for, uh, my sister to put in hers and she doesn't have TID.
Right, well, neither do I, but it's because, because you're irrigating. If you're not irrigating, like all the water just goes in your house, you know, maybe what, right? You're dividing off that and irrigate, then it's down.
Yeah, I know that, that I, I agree with the purpose, but when. With the fact that there's no flexibility, um, if people have to come out and test the, this is my concern. People have to come out and test those devices anyway, right? They get tested once a year. That same person could come and establish that, no, she's not actually hooked up to TID. And.
But that's the point. It's not just the effective TID. It's irrigating at all.
Yeah, but, um, the type of, yeah, the, uh, the type of irrigate, the type of backflow device I had to replace was because I, because apparently you're on TID. So it is. It is, uh.
Yeah, because the replacement, well, the one for TID is different, have to do a buck round.
Yeah. I, I would. I would like to find out. Um, I don't want to take up much more time, but I would like to find out if there's any, anything that the city can say about it. This is onerous and, and not always necessary and, um, and a lot of people here can't, can't afford it.
Yep.
There should be at least some sort of fund. Oh, I totally agree. Yeah. All right. Is there anything else?
Uh, just real fast, is that the one-time deal, the?
Well, put it in as long as the class, you know, but you have to have it tested every year.
And, and part of the issue with this recent vouch is the state actually increased the requirement, which is why the devices themselves have changed. So people who might have installed one in years past are now having to upgrade to different ones.
Yeah, it's infuriating. Yeah. Um. And again, you know, if you're not, I'm neither irrigating or connected to TID. I'm neither of those things. I just. Between the, uh, between the street and my house. Yeah.
Yeah, so they're able to view like they're on TID.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Um. All right, uh, there are no written communications, um, and so this meeting is adjourned at nine.
Thank you all. Really great discussion tonight. I really appreciate it.